If you have any questions, you can certainly email us after the meeting and we'll go forward from there. So with that, I'm going to call for the roll call. April, if you want to please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Oaks.
On mute.
Sorry, unmute here. Councilmember Whitlock.
Here.
Councilmember Steiner.
Here.
Councilmember Norland.
Here.
Mayor Deen.
Here.
The Administrator Herenstein.
Here.
Finance Director McCann. City Attorney Kennedy. Community Development Director Fisher.
Here.
Public Works Director Host.
Here.
Okay, we have a call. And so the next item would be to approve the agenda that was provided in advance.
Second.
Okay, we have motion of second. April, please call the roll.
Councilmember Oaks.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Yes.
Councilmember Steiner.
Yes.
Councilmember Norland.
Yes.
Mayor Deen.
Yes. All right. The next item is approval of the council minutes from March 16, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. April, please call the roll.
Yes. Whitlock.
Yes.
Steiner.
Yes.
Norland.
Yes.
Deen.
Yes. Okay. And then the next item is the consent agenda. Those items were also provided for you in advance.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. April, please call the roll.
Oaks.
Yes.
Whitlock.
Yes.
Steiner.
Yes.
Norland.
Yes.
Deen.
Yes. All right. Next item is item number eight. It's the public commentary. There's no one here for the public at this point. I'm unaware of anybody wanting to make a comment with regard to that. So we move to the business items. First item is consider resolution enacted pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 12.29 extending the period of a mayor declared local emergency. That decree was in your packet. And we are certainly in unusual times with the Corona pandemic. And so this will allow us to continue to operate the city under these extraordinary circumstances using electronic meetings such as this and whatever other means that we need to continue the good work of the city in the face of the pandemic. A second. I have a motion in a second. April, please call the roll.
Oaks.
Yes.
Whitlock.
Yes.
Steiner.
Yes.
Norland.
Yes.
Deen.
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, item B, receive an update on the COVID-19 and changes to the city services, Department of adjustments and city response. Mr. Herenstein.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the governing body for seamlessly implementing the electronic meetings and responding to the COVID crisis. Each of you will have received by now a presentation entitled Resolution 3320 related to local emergency declarations, our planning references, and then the current operational changes to city government. On page two of that presentation that you have is a overview of what I'll be deliberating. We're going to talk about just a brief COVID update as well as contact information for resources relating to the city government, background for the emergency declaration we just took, what do emergency actions allow for the governing bodies and the public's understanding and knowledge, relevant actions that the city government has taken since the peacetime emergency was declared by Governor Walz and President Trump, and city operations and staffing changes in response to the COVID virus. And then at the end, we're going to discuss a document or a program that we believe the council should consider adopting in response to COVID for business support during these emergency times. Moving to page three, briefly, positive cases in the United States are 330,000 in the state of Minnesota, 984 in Nicollet County, four in Bluth County, 16. That information was based off of the state of Minnesota's website taken today. So essentially, COVID is present and it is still taking on new cases. Moving to page four. Contact information that has already been established prior to declarations of emergency. We do have resources at the city of North Mankato homepage. There are several community and business-related information on Greater Mankato Grows website. Also, the state of Minnesota, Governor Walz created the new COVID-19 resources website yesterday, as well as the Minnesota Department of Health and the Centers for Disease Control. Moving to page five. Just providing the background for the resolutions that you acted on today because I do believe it's helpful to understand the context in which we are operating. In March of 2020, both the president and the governor of Minnesota issued emergency proclamations related to coronavirus in an effort to prepare response. Two formal actions were taken by the city of North Mankato in response to those emergency declarations and in response from guidance from the Minnesota Department of Health and the Centers for Disease Control. The first was the administrator determination regarding the emergency meeting, and the second was the mayor emergency declaration. Both of those actions have their authority rooted in the same chapter of the Minnesota statutes that the governor used to declare the emergency. It's Chapter 12. In regard to the open meetings, Chapter 13D allows for meetings to be held remotely in the instance of a pandemic. And so those are the authorities that we are acting on tonight. And tonight, the council took up Resolution 3320, and we will go in and speak about the practical applications and why that was necessary in a minute. In large measure, all of these were needed to comply not only with Minnesota statutes, but also the executive orders issued by Governor Walz and the recommendations of state agencies related to prevention of the spread of the coronavirus in the state of Minnesota. Moving to page six. As you can see, this is simply a table that outlines the different actions by the different players, the authorizing legislation that they were made under and the dates that they were made under. Moving to page seven. So what do the local actions change or allow? The city administrator's declaration of electronic meetings allows, in difference with existing state statutes on open meetings and council participations, that all or some of the city council members and all of the boards, Port Authority, Library Board, and Planning Commission, to participate electronically for more than three meetings if necessary. Those are the technical changes that we're engaging in. The second, it allows the public to access the open meetings using the phone and internet, in contrast to the public actually being present at the location of the meetings as required in the Minnesota Open Meetings Act. The timeline for this order will be in place until further notice, or when the state of Minnesota's peacetime emergency is declared to be over, or guidance from the state or other sources indicates that it can be lifted. In addition, the council as a whole can lift it at any time they choose to do so. Moving to page eight. The mayor's declaration of emergency directed two specific actions. It activated the relevant portions of the Nicollet County Operations Emergency Plan, which will likely not be necessary unless the EOC is open. But it's important to know in this time of emergency that that is the standard plan should we get into a situation of a higher level, that we have hospitals begin to be not being able to fill, take on patients, if the local mortuaries or crematoriums were unable to handle the situation. It would be likely that the EOC would be opened. For those of you that participated in emergency training, that our EOC is located in the Police Annex. Should that be unavailable, it would be at Fire Station 2. The second action the mayor's declaration directed was to authorize my office or my designees to suspend compliance with normal state laws or policies if necessary to respond to the crisis in adherence with the governor's declaration. Specifically, that means, or generally that means, if there are any laws or local ordinances, for instance, water shut offs that need to be waived during this time to comply with the orders and to assist with the prevention of the spread of the virus, our office or my office or our designees are allowed to take them. If we get into a greater emergency situation, there is additional guidance on waiving the need to bid things before we purchase them if they're over our bid threshold, enter into agreements for services with other local jurisdictions to either receive their assistance or provide their assistance, to procure the necessary equipment and facilities, and to provide the necessary information to the public in response to spreading the spread of the virus. So those are the broad or the general authorities offered in the mayor's action. Now, Minnesota Chapter 12 allows the mayor to declare a local emergency for no longer than three days unless it is extended by the consent of the council. So Mayor Deen's action was put into place last Friday. It expires tonight, or it would have expired tonight without your action. Moving to page nine. So Resolution 3320, what does it do or what does it allow? First, it continues the mayor's declaration of a local emergency until either the council discontinues it or the emergency is declared over by the governor. It affirms the administrator's declaration of electronic meetings and directs my office to continue to schedule meetings in this manner without public present at the regular meetings, but allowing them access through phone and internet. It also authorizes the city administrator enter into agreements for materials, services, or equipments related to COVID-19 prevention. You can refer to Minnesota Statute 1237 for more information upon that. Moving to page 10. The fourth thing it does is authorizes the mayor and city administrator execute necessary agreements similar to those mutual aid agreements I was speaking about earlier. It authorizes my office to take any and all actions necessary to accomplish the intents of that resolution. And really, from my perspective, in number six, it ties together all of the actors in the declaration of local emergency. We have the mayor, we have my office recognizing that in response to the governor's declarations, we need to conduct meetings online. Under Minnesota statutes, the mayor, my office, or the city attorney could have declared that. We have the mayor recognizing there is a local emergency based on what the governor is telling us and declaring one. And now we have the council joining in, affirming both the actions of the mayor, of the administrator, and really bringing the full force of our government to respond to this emergency. So I believe that the resolution ties all those things together. The timeline for this resolution will be until the governor lifts the peacetime emergency, or it is lifted by the city council. Before I move to the next portion of the presentation, are there any questions? Very well. I wanted to also go over a few action items that were taken to reinforce to the governing body, and this is on page nine, that in response to the declarations of emergency by both the national and federal government, the city has been acting in concert with those orders to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our residents, our employees, and to protect the continuity of government operations. As you can see, on March 13, those declarations were issued by both the Governor Walz and President Trump. On March 13, Taylor Library programming suspended activity. We also began authorizing traffic measures for the Mankato Clinic testing on Low Ray Drive. On March 15, the governor executed Executive Order 2002 that directed the schools to be closed for distance learning until March 27. We, in concert, then closed the Taylor Library. On March 16, the state government authorized 200 million for funding healthcare. The city implemented COVID workplace measures on the 17th in conjunction with a meeting of the executive team. The governor then issued temporary closure of bars, restaurants, and other places until March 27. On the 16th, and City Hall was closed to the public on March 18 in response to that order. On March 18, we began remote municipal services, and water shut offs were suspended by remote municipal services. I mean, in general, anything, whether that be electronic submittal permits, whether that be electronic use of the library, whether that means electronic payment of bills or licensing. In March 22, the volunteer fire department began even odd date response teams to protect their ability to respond to emergencies in the event that an event exposed the volunteers to COVID. On March 25, the governor signed a series of executive orders extending the closure of bars, directing the extension of the distance learning, and directing Minnesotans to stay at home until April 10. On March 25, we closed the public lobby and entrance to the police department. Also, the enforcement of the stay-at-home order began with the police department under DPS guidance. Just as a rough estimate, we've only had, I believe, three to six complaints, three regarding workplaces being open. Only one of those was violating the stay-at-home order. As of last night, I believe maybe three to five complaints on individuals gathering. A couple of those were at playgrounds where children were engaging in basketball games, but by and large, not much not much activity being reported in terms of violation of the order, and we thank the public for that. As you can see, on March 28, the state government issued the 330 million COVID response bill. We delayed spring cleanup on March 31. We can talk about that a little later, about how that might work in the future. The Board of Equalization and Appeals was moved to May 21 as under the recommendation of Lorna from the county. We've also, the city administrator's office declared electronic meeting on March 31, booking on Belgrade transition to virtual run on April 2. The mayor and I issued a reminder as part of the community update to social distance, I'm sorry, the police chief issued a social media reminder to social distance on April 2. The mayor issued his declaration on April 3. Community read was canceled on April 1. Volleyball leagues were moved to May 1 on April 1. And then tonight, the city council has extended a local emergency and will be considering the business support program. This is a lot, but what it means is this, we are responding to state and federal guidance in relation to the COVID-19 pandemic in our attempt to locally stop the spread. Just wanted to demonstrate that. All right. Moving on to the next subject, which is North Cato Emergency Response and Continuity of Government Plan. I want to reemphasize this. We have not activated our Emergency Operations Center. The reason that we have not activated our EOC is because at this point in time, the existing offices have not been overwhelmed for requests for service. That means we are able, in this new environment, in this area of sheltering and distancing and preventing access to the public buildings, we are still able to deliver the public services. However, we want to be mindful that that may change in the weeks to come. And in that effort, we are, I'm going to state a few things that are ongoing, that the staff has started to respond to this emergency and provide the continuity of our government. So really, the direction and control of our current emergency is, starts at the mayor and city council level. You have been responsible for providing the authorizations to our response thus far through your statutory delegations of authority with declarations and resolutions. The executive team, and that means the department directors as well as Anna, will convene as the emergency response team to act on the disaster or emergency responses guided by executive orders, guidance from the MDH, and the Centers for Disease Control. Here, we have a line of succession. So should we begin getting ill and unable to participate? Should we find ourselves in incapacity? The governing body's succession passes from the mayor to the council president, and then I suggest that the council members take over an order of tenure by year served on the North Mankato City Council. Please note, you still act as a whole outside of those emergency declarations. In general, the continuity of service passes from the city administrator to the director of community development, to the director of finance, to the director of public works, to the police chief. I want to remind everybody that if we would find ourselves in this situation, the EOC would likely be open, and Police Chief Ross Gulickson would be serving as the EOC's emergency manager. So he'd be playing a critical role in emergency response. This has much more to do with the operation and continuity of city services, and that's why that order is in place like that. If you have any questions, I can answer that. On page 15, the police chief of North Mankato serves as the local emergency manager and reports to the city administrator. Should the EOC be open, the police chief will serve in that capacity. Unless or until the EOC is open, the executive team will serve as the emergency response team for COVID. If the North Mankato or Nicollet County EOC is activated, the Nicollet County Emergency Operations Plan will govern our emergency response. At this time, the Public Health Response Plan is being put into place. There's a chapter within the Nicollet County Emergency Operations Plan that has to do with public health. We are having weekly meetings with that group. They are convening daily to share information and in preparation of any catastrophic failures in the health system due to the virus. Police Chief Gulickson is also participating in a daily call, I believe, with the South Minnesota Health Group that's led by Eric Weller out of the college. And so there's a lot of coordination and activity going on, even though the EOC has not been activated. Moving to page 16. So where's the functions of the emergency response team or the executive team in this time? We're going to maximize the protection of life and property in the community. We're going to coordinate the city government response to the peacetime emergency, as we've talked about in previous actions, through delays of different services, closures of offices, through helping the staff stagger worktimes, telecommuting if necessary. We're going to be coordinating with any local governments affected by and/or responding to the disaster or emergency. We're going to coordinate with any state and federal agencies responding to the emergency. And we're going to coordinate with our businesses and industries directly affected by the disaster. We're also going to be generating appropriate public information to the public about our services and where they can receive assistance if needed. Page 17, public information. The emergency response team will create as necessary any information for public releases in response to the peacetime emergency. I want to refer to slide for this presentation for what has already been created. Members of the governing body with requests for public information or ideas for public information that you think we should be sharing that we are not, or things we should be taking into consideration, please share that information through phone or email to the city administrator, the police chief, and the public information officer. Members of the public with questions about North Mankato services and operation status should contact 507-624-141. That's the main line. It's still operating during regular business hours, or email info@northmankato.com. Public inquiries received by members of the governing body or staff from outside of the organization should be directed to the city administrator, police chief, and public information officer for response. Going to slide 18. In addition, this slide relates to continuity of operations and services, i.e. municipal services. So this team convenes, and we're going to reallocate staff and personnel as required, which we have already done in some instances. We will acquire the necessary agreements, goods, equipment, and information to continue the government operations. We will prioritize city services by threats to public health, safety, welfare, economic impact, state mandated services, services required by law, and services that may be suspended entirely should we get to that point. To this date, I don't believe outside of the water shut offs, outside of, you know, maybe not proactively pursuing some of the lesser nuisances that we have suspended any municipal services at this time. We will coordinate, I'm sorry, we will communicate with the governing body, the public, internal stakeholders, i.e. our employees and institutions, as service levels are changing or adjusted. We will coordinate a line of succession in the event of staff level reduction. There is a beeping going on if anybody is aware of that and can mute their device. I don't know if anybody else can hear that. And it might be somebody on the public that's listening. So if there's somebody on the public that has feedback, that's a beeping noise, please take advantage of your device and mute it. Moving on, on slide 18, we would review the existing, we're also reviewing existing inventories of supplies, equipment, and personnel on hand to respond, and we are reviewing critical resources on the outside agency contact list to make sure that we have contact with individuals that we might need to be calling on. Continuing on the next slide, we will convene daily for service level updates. We'll review any collective bargaining agreements to see if there's any changes needed. We will identify current information technology systems capable for off-site operations, identify staff that are required or requested during the pandemic response. That has already been completed, and according to the essential guidelines issued by Homeland Security, all city staff were declared essential. What we are now doing is they have been guided to work with their supervisors. If they have underlying health risks, if they have childcare needs, if they are exhibiting symptoms, of course, we want them to stay at home. But we are working with individuals to provide the capability to work remotely. Some of them are already starting that work. Some of them have already started staggering work. We will develop the procedures for off-site work. That does not exist at this point in time. We've developed an information sheet for employees regarding this event, and we will provide, if available, personal protective equipment to those in need of it. 20 just has some background information on how, if we get into a situation where municipal services needs to be prioritized, how that would be ordered. I will just leave that to you for information at this time. All right. Are there any questions or comments about the response team or communication, continuity of government plan? I want to emphasize that is because we are not technically, while we are in an emergency situation, our EOC hasn't opened, and so we really technically are not operating under the Nicollet County entirety of the response plan at this point in time. Question was raised about personal protective equipment. Nate, I know that you're on the meeting. If you can answer that, and I don't know if Ross is there. I know that our firemen have some equipment. I know that our police officers have some equipment, but it's certainly not oversupplied at this point in time. Nate, can you respond?
Yeah, I can't speak to the fire department specifically, but the public works department has sanitary wipes in all vehicles. Staff are encouraged to wipe their hands, obviously several times a day, but wipe down their vehicle at the end of day. We're also keeping staff in the same vehicle from day to day. So really, it's about the hand washing that we're really taking advantage of. We also have hand sanitizer around, as well as some of the protective masks for situations where they're either working in close quarters or if they would have an interaction with the public at all.
Thank you, Mr. Host.
And this is Ross. I'm in the meeting too, if you need me to speak on it at all.
Please do, Chief Gulickson.
Good evening, everybody. From the police department's perspective, we are very well stocked and supplied with personal protective equipment. Each officer has issued to them two reusable face masks, as well as two reusable isolation gowns, in addition to a stash of the N95 respirator masks. Rubber gloves are plentiful, as are boot covers to put over our shoes should we have to go into a house or residence that has suspected COVID patients. In addition, we have some decontamination spray or sanitizing spray for officers to spray off the soles of their shoes when they return to the office as to not unnecessarily track stuff around the office, as well as sanitizers or hand wipes to be used for all squad cars and any equipment. We also have a stash of masks that should we have to take somebody into custody and transport them to jail, those people will also be given a mask to protect us from them. So we have, we're stocked fairly well for PPE.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to page 22. Thank you. All right. That brings us to page twenty-two. I'm going to move relatively quickly through here. I will highlight only the most relevant, but this is the current changes to city operations and staffing in response to the COVID. I will move through under the headings that are listed here. In terms of the legislative and city council, we'll be meeting electronically as necessary. And we will, and they have provided the necessary declarations for local emergencies authorizing appropriate responses. Regarding administration and finance, city hall is close to the public. Payroll and accounts receivables continue to be processed and managed in a timely manner. Utility payments may be accepted online, over the phone, in the mail, or continue to be dropped off in the utility box. Several employees have been set up to work remotely as well as flexible schedules implemented. Extra hand sanitizers as well as PPEs have been made available to the staff, and we're encouraging the social distancing policy. The city attorney and city engineer continue to provide service remotely, daily and in person. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. No interruption of service in regard to this. And other consultants continue to provide service via Zoom meetings and telephone. In regards to the police, the lobby remains closed during the stay-at-home order. Signs are in place to direct individuals to call nine-one-one for emergencies or the administrative line if they have non-emergency requests. They are enforcing the stay-at-home order. I will welcome Ross's discussion on that, but I believe general compliance has been the theme. Patrol schedules continue as scheduled. Office staff are working from home and responding to calls via phone, email, or fax. There may be some changes in vacation and leave requests if there's an increase per calls. In regards to fire, as mentioned before, there's a staggered schedule for odd and even days. Before making entrance, residents will be asked if anybody has been suffering symptoms of COVID. Carbon monoxide calls, only one individual will gain access to the residents. Alarm calls the same type of response with all others staging near a responding vehicle. During open fires, as we had today at the Norwood Inn, normal operations will ensue. Medical assists, the senior officer will have a discussion with the first responders before assisting. All other calls will approach each situation as it arises. For public works, this includes street water, sewer, garbage, and recycling. As mentioned several times already, water shut offs will not be occurring until the lifting of the emergency. Playground structures have been closed. Parks, water, and streets are no longer meeting as a large group in the morning to avoid group situations. Staff have been told to minimize riding together. They are sanitizing the insides of their vehicles and their hands multiple times a day. Staff have been directed to not enter any residence unless it is emergency. No public work services have been reduced at this time, and there's been no change to the garbage or recycling service. We did receive a question from a member of the public as to why picnic tables had not been moved from the park system. Chief Gullickson, Director Host and I discussed this. We also do have two restrooms that remain open in the park system. As you know, the governor's stay-at-home order did not extend to parks. We continue to have frequent users in them. The police determined that they would be able to accurately patrol the areas to determine if the social distancing guidelines are being violated to see if there's large groups gathering. And if there becomes a problem with that, we would certainly be willing to close off those facilities. But at this time, we also feel that if their parks are open, especially in the highly traveled ones, then a couple of the restrooms, both in South Spring Lake and Benson Park, which is open year round, will remain open as long as they're being sanitized by the park department each day. That being said, if the governing body wishes to act in another way, I'd certainly be open to hearing that feedback. And I know Chief Gullickson and Director Host would be as well. The library is closed until further notice. The library will begin library pickup starting on April thirteenth. We have started a mailing program, got a nice compliment on social media today about how the reception or receipt of a book brightened their sheltering in place. Order. All programming has been canceled. Community read has been postponed, hopefully in the fall. And staff is at home managing several different areas, some with childcare, some have chosen to take a vacation, and the remainder continue to work on deep cleaning in the library. Building, moving to community development inspections, building inspectors continue their plan reviews, inspections, and answer contractor citizen questions. Permit applications are being accepted online by mail or by fax. And contractors may continue to pick up permits at the door if they do not have access to email or fax. They will likely be just handed the permit through the door. Rental inspections, as mentioned last week, or at the last meeting by the fire department, has been postponed. Planning commission will not conduct an April meeting, but plans to resume in May. The community development department has been reaching out to businesses who are affected by the COVID. We'll receive a little report from Mr. Fisher on that as we entertain the business loan program. And we want to make sure that we're supporting them and aware of the available resources that the state and the federal government and hopefully local government has made aware, made available to them. Inspectors have been given appropriate protective gear if they will be entering a resident, residents for inspection. And if inspection demand decreases due to the stay-at-home order, staff is prepared to stagger work. Community development meetings are all being held remotely. Caswell Park, ballfield preparations continued. All April Caswell Park tournament events are canceled. Hiring temporary workers is on hold until additional direction is received. I do want to mention just quickly, and you have this in a separate document that will be mailed to you about update on planned cities events. There's been four tournaments canceled in May. There's been, one of those is the Peppers Tournament. The rest are related to high school leagues and adult softball. Of course, if school does not convene, likely will not see any of the high school tournaments play this year. That will be a big local economic impact, over two and a half million dollars. But we're hopeful that the season will continue in some session. Spring Lake Park Swim Facility is proceeding as planned. Pending governor's orders on any delays to public pool openings in response to the spread of the coronavirus, but no changes have been implemented as of yet. North Mankato Taylor Summer Schedule, we have canceled adult craft night, usually about fifty people there, community read, family Easter egg party, over a hundred, Easter egg hunt, over a hundred, and another adult craft night has been also been canceled. So just to give you a sense of what's going on, we still are hopeful that art splash, music in the park, blues on Belgrade, beer on Belgrade, party on the prairie later this fall can be completed. All right. You know, a professor once told me it's better if you don't speak in the council meeting, so I'm much less, I'm sort of surprised that I have to talk so long. But that's good. We're sort of been an encyclopedia of city services.
Unusual situation.
Okay. Our next item of business is the coronavirus business and loan program. I'm going to hesitate. Anna or April, can you bring me copies of this document so that council members that are present can just find that more quickly out of their appendix? If you are, you're joining us remotely, council members, it is in your appendix, and it is which attachment? M? Let me take a look. Hold on. It would be attachment or exhibit N, N as in no.
In this, in this big one?
Yes. So way towards the end, right before relevant executive orders. But I'm just going to hand you this one, Diane, because I've got it. Can you go make some copies for? All right. Mr. Fisher, before we dive into the loan program, would you give a little overview about our discussions with local business owners, our business owner meeting today, and then the thoughts behind the loan program that we are asking the council to request the Port Authority begin? You're, okay.
All right. Sorry about that. Today, we did hold a Zoom meeting with several businesses in North Mankato, including staff, including members of G M G that talked about the state and federal programs that are available to them. We also had representation from Senator Friends and Representative Brand who spoke. And we're able to share a lot of information with the businesses on how to navigate the programs that we have that are all available to them, and hear from our state representatives as well, more on the, you know, the state of the state. So in large, we thought it was a very successful meeting. We hope to do more and continue to engage our businesses so we know what they need, and then we can provide to them what they need. One of the things that was presented to them today was a potential business loan program from the city, which could supplement some of the state and federal programs that some may not be eligible to apply for. And I believe you have the packet of information that talks about a loan package where a bit or qualifying business, not all businesses will qualify. These would be the one that are affected by the shutdown by the governor. But he's basically, a qualifying business could receive up to twelve thousand five hundred dollars per business, could be eligible for a five thousand dollar, five-year forgivable loan, and up to another loan of seventy-five hundred dollars. That loan would be based on three percent interest. The repayment would be deferred essentially for a year until June of twenty twenty-one. And those repayments would be at approximately hundred and sixty-six dollars beginning June one, twenty twenty-one. And hearing from some of the participating businesses during the meeting and after the meeting, they were very much appreciative of the city considering this for them. And, you know, we'll, we'll present that to the council tonight for your consideration.
Dean, do you want to share anything from that meeting or your thoughts based on what you heard?
Yep. So it was, you know, I had asked the city administrator and the Port Authority to look at what our options were to provide support to our very valuable and treasured North Mankato businesses. And this is a program that they have developed utilizing, I believe, community development funds that we have available and to, to put those to work right away to try and help people bridge between now and when they might be able to receive some further federal funding through the Payroll Protection Act and the other things they did underneath the CARES Act. So this is our opportunity to try and help our businesses make the transition for especially those businesses that are outright closed. And I really congratulate the staff for putting together in a very short period of time a workable program that we're hoping that we can get in place and have people start applying for dollars as soon as tomorrow. And it helped them get through this very difficult time now that their businesses are closed and they have ongoing bills and things to take care of. So thank you to the staff for putting this together.
I agree. Good job.
Let me answer that. So the program is designed to meet the businesses' needs. The, if we have businesses that are at risk of closure and over five thousand dollars in bills, we want to be able to respond quickly and swiftly and issue what we were determining the forgivable loan. So that would then decline in expected repayment by twenty percent over five years. So that's, that's the forgivable piece of it if they continue to remain in business after the pandemic response is in place. The business, we do recognize that businesses are probably facing greater economic hardship than just the five thousand, but there may be some where that would be what they simply want, and they don't want to take on additional debt that will have to be repaid. And so the other option is if you need more assistance than five thousand, is that we will offer up to twelve and a half thousand dollars. The first year, you would not have a payment. The second year, you would repay at interest rate of three percent, although the first five thousand of that is forgivable. So they would only be repaying the seventy-five hundred dollars if they choose to do that. Does that answer the question? Yes, correct. The one thing I want to mention just in response to that is certainly we want to make sure that we have mechanisms in place to encourage repayment. I think where these loans are different than what we would typically be considered, considering is we're typically giving three hundred thousand dollar loans to businesses that are making personal guarantees backed by a bank. These are much smaller micro loans designed for cash flow injection if we are experiencing severe distress among businesses that have been closed. In our conversations with businesses, some are seeing a sixty percent, seventy percent, eighty percent reduction in business. With the hard work that has gone on and the significant investment that the city's made, both on the Belgrade District, the Commerce District, the Northport Industrial Park, these loans and the likelihood of repayment, while we are certainly going to be vigilant about protecting the public's dollar and money, are a much different mechanism than our standard mechanism that we, we would be deploying for business support. Approximately one point eight million.
Surplus. And in the past, a living boy, pardon my English, has been a city. Because one of the easy things they don't have to pay, the local government pays. That's nothing to be at at gun tonight. There's nothing to even know. We don't know if it's going to go two weeks or two years. But it's something I But it's something I would suggest the council members, at least get in the back of their body somewhere and be thinking about, what do we do when, you know, the government has got unbelievable amounts, the federal government has a huge multi-trillion dollar debt right now, the state of Minnesota has insurance there, because the legislature is required to come in with a balanced budget.
Well, even more of an argument for the program.
Mr. Kennedy, I think your points are well made, you know, more businesses in, in activity, hopefully will prevent that to the extent as possible.
We're, this, we're, we're making recommendations tonight, hopefully, for the staff to flesh this out in some more detail. But we do want to get funds in the hands of the businesses that need it as quickly as possible. And so we're going to allow people to start applying now, and we will work out the details as we need to into the future, to your earlier points, and to your, to your latter points, that's something we'll take on as we look at our budgeting process. Okay.
You bet. So the last thing I just want to add is, we've had a lot of information provided tonight. I would encourage you to review it, and if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please contact my office in terms of our emergency response to the COVID and emergency procedures, and we'd be happy to review that as the part of the emergency response team. With that, that concludes my update on the COVID-19 and changes to city services, departments, and city response. And I can stand for any questions.
Would we be able to have like some sort of Skype meeting or some meeting about this loan program? Because, I mean, just me sitting here, knowing that I'm been one of the affected ones since day one, I've got a lot of questions when it comes to SBA and a lot of other things. And would we be able to talk about that in a different manner, or should I just email you John or Mark, keep you both?
No, I, I, well, you're certainly welcome to email me, and I will speak about that in terms of your direct business needs. Myself, Mike, Kevin can, can help you with it. But we will convene a Port Authority meeting in the next day or so, or whenever April gets the meeting published, to adopt the program and go through those questions. Certainly, in regards to the SBA, there is some support out there. Sometimes if you take support, you might be impacted in other areas, but we don't believe that this program would impact your ability to claim the SBA, state or federal tax, or not tax, the repayment exemption for the first $10,000.
Yeah, there's just so many programs that are coming out, and I think, not me as a business owner, but everyone else out there, kind of, we're getting flooded with so much information, it'd be good to be able to kind of streamline that process for everybody, for all the businesses in North Mankato.
Yep, and we will, we'll plan to have that discussion, and we'll plan to have some business resource staff available to answer some of those questions as well at that meeting.
That was, that was basically what we did at the meeting today, was to initially flesh that out with the various business owners, and we will be having another meeting once we finalize this and bring that back up to the same business group again, so, all right. All right. With that, let's move to item C. Thank you for that update, Mr. Hirst. All right, item C, consider resolution declaring costs to be assessed in ordering preparation of proposed assessment project number 19-06, A B C D E F, 300 and 400 block of Monroe Avenue. I believe that's Mr. Surf.
Yes, good evening, I'll take this one. So we did open bids for the Monroe Avenue Improvement Project last Tuesday on the 31st, received four bids, good bids, considering the current environment. Low bidder was W. Lorenzen Sons from Mankato. Their low bid was 5% below the engineer's estimate, approximately 11% below the next low bid. And we did some discussions, had some discussions with representatives from Lorenz, based on past performance, we feel that they're qualified to perform the work under that contract. But according to the city's standard process, before awarding the contract, we typically have the assessment hearing for the project, and that assessment hearing scheduled for May 4th, so the first meeting in May. Finance Director McCann has been preparing, working on the assessment role for that project, and we do have two resolutions that would basically go to the next step and set the assessment hearing, a resolution declaring costs to be assessed and ordering the preparation of the proposed assessment, and then also the resolution actually setting the hearing on the proposed assessment, and those would have to be adopted in separate actions, obviously. See if, Kevin, Kevin, did you want to say anything about assessments on the project for the benefit of the council?
Yes, so we're doing what we've done with Commerce Drive, so this is a unique situation again, where we have a different variety of property owners with a school district encompassing close to two blocks, a church that's a full block, and then you have large residential mix in there. So we're trying to keep in line the, the equity argument with the residential having the cap around $7,000 is what we're looking at, then with the church and the school parking lot having a, or church in the school having equity for it being such a large property. So we've kind of taken their properties down onto a linear foot basis and applied that kind of cap rate to their properties to get kind of some larger assessments, but still within line of like a cap prorated amount applied to their properties. Any questions on that? And we'll go into greater detail when we get to the assessment hearing with those property owners.
Right, the process does require two weeks' published notice, two weeks' written notice, so we'll be working with April to get those notices out, especially, and then any special requirements considering, anticipating that there may be some restrictions on public meetings at that point, I guess we'll evaluate that and, and continue to work towards having an effective public hearing, whether it be electronic or whether we can do that in person at that point.
I would move the resolution declaring the cost to be assessed.
If I can just interrupt one, one minute, if, if, if I can just interrupt one minute, if there's somebody listening on the telephone and there is background noise in your home, please turn it off or mute it, because it is interfering with the discussion that we can hear on the Zoom meeting. We're getting some feedback through the phone call-in area, and so if you can mute anything to the best of your abilities, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Billy, you were making a motion.
I would move to adopt the resolution declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering preparation of the proposed assessment project.
Okay, we'll save a second. April, please call the roll.
Oaks.
Yes.
Whitlock.
Yes.
Diner.
Yes.
Norland.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. Okay, thank you, motion carries. All right, item D, consider setting assessment hearing for project number 19-06, A B C D E F, 300 and 400 block of Monroe Avenue, May 4th, 2020, at 7:00 P. M.
Move to set the assessment hearing for May 4th.
Second.
Have a motion of second, okay. April, please call the roll.
Oaks.
Yes.
Whitlock.
Yes.
Diner.
Yes.
Norland.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. Okay, thank you, motion carries. All right, April, are you aware of any open forum comments?
Nobody has reached out to me that they have a comment. I do have three callers on that should be able to hear if they are, if they have comments. But I would request that they have, say their name and address, so that we know who they, who it is that is speaking.
Everyone has a comment at this time, and I'd like to address the council, please give your name and address. Hearing none, I'm going to close the open forum, we'll move to seat administrator and staff committees, Mr. Hirst, do you have anything additional?
You know, I just want to thank the staff at all levels of this organization, the people who come to work and responding to crisis, and also I think the governing body is flexible during this time, and I want to thank the businesses who's really encouraged speaking with them today. Want to thank our state representatives and senators who stopped in to encourage those folks.
I'm sorry, I'm muted. Anyway, I just gave a general thanks to the entire world. Said it was very, it was very genuine, it was very great. With that, I will conclude my comments.
Thank you. All right. Mr. McCann, do you have anything further?
Um, we have our auditors coming later this month, so I'm sure we'll still be doing the distance, kind of auditing process, I haven't talked to them to see what they're planning to do, but I'm sure it's a lot of emailing back and forth, but maybe some Zoom meetings, and a lot of scanning and sending over their way. But staff is still coming in, still committed to helping residents whatever way we can.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Host, do you have anything?
My only comment would be is that road construction is still allowed by current guidelines to proceed, so our mill and overlay projects are going to be kicking off here in the next couple of weeks, so you'll see some activity around town, some possible detours as our 2020 road construction season starts up here.
Okay, well, can I add something? Sorry to interrupt. As you are all aware, we have delayed spring cleanup because of the COVID response in an effort to protect our employees. We'll need to be thinking about what that service looks like this year, especially because likely when the crisis is lifted, we will be in the heat of patching season and road work. So if you have any creative solutions you would like to suggest to Nate and I, as we consider sort of how to work around this particular issue, we'd enjoy hearing them.
One comment I would just make on that, it might be easier if we do the drop-off when we, when we take the little restrictions off, do the drop-off, then we can do a concentrated, do it at city, at the city shop, and save the pickup until fall after patching season is over, and maybe flip the schedule this year. In light of that, again, as I mentioned earlier, I presume it will have a large harvest, because people are taking this time to sort through a lot of their treasures, but I'd like to be able to make sure that we still have the service available at some point in time. We will publish, I'd like to have us publish a notice that it has been delayed. I see a few places with stuff already out on the boulevard that we will not be coming to get, and so people will need to harvest those back in until we can put that program back in place. But we'll keep the public updated on that as we go forward.
I think that sounds like a wonderful idea. Mr. Host, do you have any comments on that?
I don't know, it's, we know it's a popular service and we want to provide it, it's just the unknown timeline right now, and making sure when things, restrictions get back, that we're able to put an effective plan together, knowing there's a lot of potentially coming up too.
Because I think that's, well, I think in, in the interest of responding to the public, could, could we have feedback from the council? Are you comfortable with this proceeding, as the mayor described, with a sort of flip-flop this year, a spring drop-off and a fall, potentially fall cleanup? It will just, we'll compound a few things with leaf pickup, but I think we'll throw it out there for now.
Good idea.
I'm, I'm very comfortable with that.
Yep. So perhaps by the next meeting, the staff can give us a more of a solid recommendation, but you can investigate until then and come back.
Okay, sounds good.
But for now, we'll just publish that we aren't doing it as we had planned at the end of April, we'll get back to the public in the future. All right, all right. Mr. Fisher, did you have anything this evening?
No, John, do we have Patrick Baker called in? Is he going to give an update?
Yes, we do have. Yes, we do have Patrick on the line. We did, we're hoping to have him give a little update on some business activities similar to what Sandra had, I believe that we will also ask him to participate in the Port Authority meeting to discuss the, the changes to, I'm sorry, the loan program and sort of the status of business resources. But Patrick, if you are on the, listening and would like to give an update, if it is agreeable to the mayor, would that be all right?
Certainly.
Sorry, Patrick has left the line, but he's no longer on.
So we will see him in a couple days while we're talking about the loan program.
All right, any other staff members have any comments? April?
None tonight.
Okay, all right, we'll move on to mayor and council comments. Mrs. Norland, do you have anything?
I just wanted to say it's been an interesting run, hasn't it? I am walking a lot, all around upper north, and there are a lot of people walking and biking and walking their dogs, and you know what? It's, I don't want to go too far, but it's almost fun, because we get out in the middle of the street, you know, many feet away from each other and say, "How you doing today?" And people will say, "I'm doing good." So it's, it's a very positive, warm, supportive experience, and I'm, and I'm grateful.
Okay, I, since you bring that up, Diane, I do want to make a comment, I had one caller that was concerned about all the pedestrian and bicycle traffic out there, just, and I'm going to ask city staff to also publish this in the e-news, but just as a matter of etiquette, bicycles with adult bicycle riders are supposed to be on the roads, not on the sidewalks, so roads and trails. If you are coming up behind a pedestrian with a bicycle, please announce yourself so you're not startling someone, and be loud about it, because oftentimes walkers are wearing headsets. Cadestrians, if you're on, should be on the sidewalks or on the trails. If they are on streets that do not have sidewalks, then they should be, pedestrians should be traveling against traffic, facing oncoming traffic, whereas bicycles would be traveling with traffic, as a matter of etiquette and for safety. So those are the official rules of travel, and to your point, Diane, there are a lot more people out there on the roads and on the sidewalks and such, and so still maintain your social distancing, but please be aware of the rules of the road and, and pay attention to your circumstances. We don't have an accident because someone's not paying attention, but I'm, I'm greatly encouraged with the amount of traffic I'm seeing out there of walkers and bicyclers taking advantage of the time and the weather that we're having. I'm hopeful that our, our quality of life will improve with this from some of those perspectives as well, we'll start some new habits that will hopefully last beyond the pandemic, but please be aware of the rules of the road as you're doing so. All right, okay, Billy, did you have anything?
I just want to thank everyone for, staff and everything for going above and beyond during this unusual time, and thanks to everyone for all the work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Sandra, did you have anything?
I'm just pretty much same thing as everyone else, again, I think we mentioned it with the COVID, you know, it's really hard for us to be stuck in and cooped up, but that social distancing is so very important if we want to get over this curve as soon as possible, especially coming up with Easter this Sunday. Hopefully, everybody can stay safe and remember that as much as we enjoy being with family and doing those fun things, unfortunately, we, we can't, but hopefully we'll be able to have a big celebration once everybody can get out and people again. So anyway, thanks staff for all your hard work, doing everything that you're doing for us, thanks community members for being socially distanced, but helping your neighbors when you can, and hope you have a wonderful Easter. being socially distanced, but helping your neighbors when you can. And hope you have a wonderful Easter weekend.
All right, thank you. All right. And Mr. Whitlock, did you have anything?
Yeah, I've got a few things. This is really a historic time that we're going through here. And I want to thank the staff also for everything that they put into this. You know, you think back at like 1918 when they had the flu pandemic that came through. Our, our city was not a, a city at that point in time. How would they have handled that? Would they have been outside the building yelling in? That possibly could have, could have worked for them. Tonight, I was not able to hear Attorney Kennedy's remarks. Administrator John Hierenstein said that those were really good questions and comments. But we, I believe us at home, we're not able to hear it. We were hearing it a little bit through, I think, John's microphone. But if we could have a, a transcript of what he had written down, talking about the loan benefit, loan program and stuff, just so we've got that stuff now.
And that will also be included in the minutes, Jim.
Okay. What I'm hoping is that we can have that prior to the court authority meeting though.
And we can even, why don't we have him attend the meeting, Jim, or Counselor Whitlock, excuse me. We can just have Attorney Kennedy also attend to discuss those issues at the meeting, if that would meet your expectations.
Well, yes, just so we, we could hear him. I, you know, I know you at the, at City Hall could hear him, but we were not hearing him on it. I'm glad that we had the OFC, OEC conference. Councilperson Norland was there, Mayor Dean and myself attended it. We don't really know how close we are to actually maybe having something like that in the future here. And it was good to know that we went through that, that training with every, everyone. So that was with the city police department, fire department, now Eric Weller. So please help and flatten this curve out. Stay home. You, you could just tell a lot of people are home by the, the amount of traffic on the streets. So anyway, this is Holy Week and please worship electronically where you can. And happy Easter to everybody.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Okay. For my comments then, again, thank you to everyone, all of our citizens and our staff on their efforts at social distancing. Those are, as the governor said last night in his State of the State address, that is our, our vaccine right now. It's the only tool that we have to try and mitigate this pandemic as quickly as possible. So please continue to pursue those efforts, both at home and at work. And if you're taking advantage of utilizing the city parks and trails, please observe social distancing there as well. We will, I'm going to ask the staff to, to publish some of the social distancing information and the rules of the road I mentioned earlier and get those out in the electronic newsletter. And I'd also like to try and utilize that through the NICSIL system as a way to try and get some of that information out and encourage people to continue the social distancing efforts that we're doing. Because some people aren't looking at the newsletter, nor are they participating in the local news media as much as we might need them to. So we'll try the NICSIL system as well as another avenue to try and get information to people's hands. And so with that, as everyone else has mentioned, thank you to the staff for a great job. I'm managing a very unusual situation for our city and our citizens. And please be safe and stay well and happy Easter. And so with that, I would ask for motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
All right. Motion carries. All in favor, good night. Thank you for attending and see you next time.